About our enterprise fund pay plan, and I think Don.
John, if you may.
Recognize Don.
I'm gonna start things off this afternoon. As you're well aware, I've been before council on several occasions over the last four or five years talking about the issues we've had with retention of employees in the electric division, particularly, in particular, our line technicians and engineers. Last August, August 2017, council approved a market pay differential policy. The basis of this policy was to allow us to take those critical positions and pay them their regular pay plus a market differential. The market differential was to bring their total pay up to something very close to what the southeastern market pays. I want to tell you that policy's been very successful. If you remember, last August, we were short six line technicians. Two of those positions had been open for well over a year, and we were just having no luck at finding new recruits. Since the policy's been in place, we've been able to hire six journeyman line technicians. We're at full staff there. We're also able to retain two substation technicians that had found employment elsewhere and one engineer that had found another position. Last August, when you approved the market pay differential policy, you also asked the city manager to look at a pay plan for all of our enterprise funds, the airport, water and sewer, the energy services, and the stormwater divisions. While you have, may not have heard directly from those folks, they've been having issues as well with recruitment and retention. The basis of the enterprise pay plan was to take each one of those individual funds, go out into the southeastern market, and compare those jobs to similar jobs in the southeastern market. Airport jobs be compared to airport jobs, water and sewer to water and sewer construction and operation jobs, and thus so forth. Last fall, we hired Willis Towers Watson. They're an international firm that, one of their specialties is pay and compensation issues. Since last fall, they've worked with the directors and the enterprise funds, and particularly with Deborah and her staff and with Larry, to do the research and to come back with a recommendation for us. Today, they'll be sharing their findings. They presented this to the general services committee in July. The general services committee recommended to come to the full council and for adoption here. From Willis Towers Watson, we have Kim Evatt and Maren McNeil. They're senior consultants with Willis Towers Watson. Kim will be coming up just shortly to begin the presentation, and then Maren will follow up with the final part of it. And once they're through, Deborah will come up and go over the, our plans for implementation should the policy, should the pay plans be approved. Before Kim starts, I'd like to see if there's any questions you have of me of where we've been or anything.
Any question?
I think this is wise that we're doing this. If it wasn't for the electric fund, we wouldn't be where we are today. We're able to build spec buildings because we can go into the electric fund, and now we're fixing to be able to buy distant land with the help of Rusko Bath and the water and sewer. So we've been diversifying. You guys do a super job, and I know when you talk about salaries, it scares the council of death, but if we don't keep good people in special jobs, we're not going to stay ahead of the curve, I can tell you that.
Not only that, we won't be able to attract competent help, a professional that's competent. And in order to retain them, then, you know, pay for what you get, you get what you pay for.
Okay, you have a question? Thank you, sir. Jim?
Thank you, everybody. Okay. I'm gonna walk to the beginning of the presentation. It's sort of two parts. The first part, sorry. We are gonna talk a little bit about the process, the methodology we went through to look, to benchmark the jobs here against market, and give you a summary of those findings. And then we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Maren, and she's gonna talk about the actual pay plan or pay structure that we've put together for the enterprise funds. So as Don mentioned, we started working, this is our second project with the City of Monroe. We started working with Don a couple of years ago on the electrics department. This time, we reviewed 83 jobs that were, we call them non-executive jobs, but we used job descriptions. So the city provided us with job descriptions, and we went through and matched to surveys. And we'll talk in a minute about the types of surveys we matched to. And then we went through all of the matches with each of the heads of the different enterprise funds, just to make sure we were right on point with the matches, and we were accurate in comparing jobs within City of Monroe to the jobs in the surveys. At that point, we pull market competitive data from a variety of surveys. So I'm gonna flip here. The market that we looked at is a combination of public and private sector organizations. We think it's very, you know, it's prudent to understand what your market for talent is. So recognizing that you may not be able to pay the same as the, as the public companies, but we think you need to understand what that market is, so you know who you're competing with for the talent. You'll see in the middle page four, the survey sources. We use multiple survey sources. We, Willis Towers Watson has our own database of surveys. We use both of those. They're specific to energy services for some of the jobs, and then general industry for other jobs. We also used another survey that's specific to energy services. We used a wage survey that's more North Carolina. We use the APPA survey, and then we use a water utility survey. So a broad array, and those all have an array of different types of organizations. We've looked at base salary, and we looked at total cash compensation. And what that means is the base salary plus any incentives or bonuses paid to other, to incumbents in other organizations. And we compared City Monroe to both base salary and total cash compensation. And the last bullet is, we generally, surveys all come out at different times of the year, so we age them forward to February 1st of 2018, which was a date we agreed upon at the beginning, so that all of them were aged to current. Findings for each enterprise fund was, I'm sorry, I think I went too. What we found was that the four base salary for the 83 positions, they were 19% below the 50th percentile of the market, 10% below the 25th percentile, and 70, 28% below the 75th percentile of the market. When we look at compensation, we consider a market to be not a point, but a range, and we consider plus or minus 15% of the median to be competitive. So you'll see that you are just below, 19%, just below that competitive range for base salary. It's higher, obviously, for total cash compensation, because generally, some of the other organizations, public companies pay incentives to these employees. So we, you know, obviously, the relatively low position against that is, it reflects the fact that the market is much broader than just municipalities. So, you know, we would expect there to be a gap between what you pay and the market data. You just have to kind of consider how you want to position yourself against that. So you'll see, when we built the salary structure, we took that into consideration. And so we looked at the 50th percentile of the market, and we actually set the salary structure at 90% of that. So recognize that we probably can't compete, you know, with all of those organizations, but we want to be within, in the ballpark. All right. So the findings for each enterprise fund was generally consistent with the overall findings. There was not really one, other than the solid waste, maintenance, and administration that was, you know, that within that plus or minus 15% range. The others were generally close to our overall findings, so they were more than 15% below market. And airport operations was particularly far below market. And this pie chart here just shows, this is actually incumbents. So how many incumbents? When we looked at them against the 50th percentile of the market, that plus or minus 15% range, 31% fell within that range, 69% of the incumbents fell below plus or minus 15% of the market. Before I turn it over, I'm gonna start talking about this salary structure. Any questions on the methodology, the initial findings, competitiveness, surveys, anything related to?
I have a question. When you were comparing to municipalities, how were, how were those municipalities chosen? Was it based on size, or how did you guys?
Sure. So we actually use published survey data. So it's not that we would go out to a municipality or go out to a public company and ask for data. It has to be aggregated, so that it's confidential. So we would, we would use surveys, and different surveys have different participants. So some may have municipalities, some may have, you know, maybe more heavily weighted to investor-owned utilities or public companies. So that's why we used a broad array of surveys, so we could kind of get all of those different, you know, labor markets.
Well, I see, I'm looking at this chart, it's like 69%, 31%. And this might be, I don't know if I'm even asking the right question. I know we try to keep up with cities our size.
Sure.
Who's making one and whatever. And I hear what you say there. Well, in the last year, or whenever it's been, and I don't know how long it's been, we just compared what we, what we were paying against other cities, and it's basically the same, or the way I understand it. So now, here it says we're 69%, 69, 31% below market, 15% below market value, and et cetera, et cetera. But I hear you saying it's all over.
That's right.
With not cities our size.
That's right. Because you have to, you're not only recruiting from municipalities, other municipalities, you're recruiting from all types of businesses and organizations. So again, we're not saying you have to pay exactly what they're paying, but you need to understand what they're paying, so you know what you're up against, and then create a, you know, what is our strategy? What's gonna be our position? And what we're suggesting is, if you target your, your actual pay plan on 90% of the 50th percentile of the market, that doesn't mean every person's gonna be paid there, but that's kind of where you're putting the midpoint of the range. Then you still have a range to pay competitively, and we would expect to see differences in pay. So, you know, based on performance, tenure, experience, all of those factors. So you're gonna see a big difference in pay, but it's where you really target your, your pay plan. And we are suggesting, if you do 90% of the whole market, then you're able to maybe compete and be in the ballpark with some of these other types of organizations.
So just for clarity, just for clarity, it's based more on the job and responsibility of the job, rather than whether it's municipality or private?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
Is that just for clarity?
Yeah. Right. It's an easy comparison in Don's group, where he's competing with, you know, the Duke Energies and the contractors and all of those types of organizations.
Yeah, I can really see how that goes there, because, you know, that goes all the way.
Right. Right. Yeah. So, and then, you know, given now the low unemployment, it just keeps getting, you know, harder and harder. And honestly, you're, I'm working with three cities in North Carolina right now on this exact same issue, and it's generally across, it starts, it seems to always start with the electric, the utilities, but they've, they're adding in the other enterprise funds as well, so. Any other questions before we talk about the structure stuff? All right.
So, as Kim said, we, we've taken that market data and really translated it into salary ranges that you'll use to establish compensation rates for your employees going forward. We have targeted these ranges at 90% of the market, and what that means is that the midpoint of those ranges for each job is established at a point that's about 10% less than the market median. And so that gives you a range from the minimum to the maximum of usually about 50%. I think some of the higher ranges, moving points like 75 and above, might be a little bit wider than that. And that just gives you some flexibility to pay lower in the range for people who are less experienced, or higher in the range for people who have a lot of experience and have a track record of good performance. We've developed multiple structures for each enterprise fund. So one of the points of contention, I think, has been putting some jobs into the same range, because the market pays them a certain amount, but internally, those jobs don't feel like they're the same level. So it's sort of broken that paradigm by creating a separate structure for each enterprise fund. Going forward, there's a significant advantage to that, because let's say that the energy services group, we see more uptick in the market over the course of the next three to five years. We can manage those ranges more aggressively than we manage the airport operations or the wastewater management group, for example. And so you'll see here the set of ranges. They're covered on both pages. The, the job slotting has been reviewed by HR and the leaders, and so we're pretty comfortable at this point that the jobs underneath this and how they're slotted are in the right spot. When we got down to it, we ended up with 46 ranges overall. The midpoint to market differential, which is a key statistic we look at when we build salary ranges, was minus 10% of the median, which that is exactly what we set out to, to develop, was a set of ranges that was 10% less than median. So on average, some are higher, some are lower, but on average, it's 10%. That average comp ratio statistic is a good thing to understand. It is not about what the market pays, but it's about what you pay relative to your new ranges. And what that says is your people are about 10% on average below midpoint. So there's some dispersion, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but the average person in the enterprise fund that was in scope is 10% less than midpoint. The statistics about below minimum and costs and above maximum, those statistics actually have changed, because Deborah and team have worked through some internal process to identify some specific changes and pulling in a couple of additional employees into this, for some reasons that she'll cover. But when we stopped our detailed work, we had 15 people who were falling below these ranges. The average amount was pretty small. The total amount was 55,700, so you can do the math. It's not a ton of money per person. There was one person who had popped out above the maximum of their new range, but it was by $1,000. So as the ranges move forward, that person will be sort of recaptured in the ranges in future years, and probably eligible for some base salary adjustments going forward. With that, this is a picture of that distribution. I said on average, your typical person who was in scope for this study was about 10% below the midpoint. Pardon me. The midpoint in this graph is illustrated by that sort of gray dotted line, and so you can see that most people are falling below that. And then you have a handful of people falling above that. So I think it's about 33% are above midpoint, and 77 are below midpoint. About 18% of the population is actually below the minimum of the range. So that was that 15 that we saw on the previous page. Overall, you know, we've established a midpoint and a target rate for compensation that is a little more, it's more aggressive than what you're paying today. That's what we can surmise from this graph. As we were sort of developing the recommendations for the implementation, our advice was to review all of the job slotting, look at the individuals who are below minimum, look to bring those people up through the budgeting process to the minimum at least, and then looking at anyone else who was falling low in the range, but had significantly strong statistics on things like tenure, time of position, previous experience, performance, if they weren't competitively paid with their peers, those sorts of things. This is a good opportunity to do what we'd call a market adjustment for even people who are falling a little bit, who are not below minimum, but just low in the range. And so Deborah will talk more about that. Before I pass it over to Deborah, do any of you have questions about anything covered up to this point?
Under that performance standard, I guess that would encapsulate stuffs like attitude, job performance, absentee, all of that falls under that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you guys have presumably a method for defining what performance is, but yes, assuming that's there. Productivity, expertise, those sorts of things.
When two years or three years ago, that we did a pay study survey, and we outlined three years to catch up, I believe.
Yeah, phase three.
And we said, most employees, 77% are behind in salary, is that what I'm reading?
I think I'll explain it.
Okay. I'll wait for you.
Yeah, it's a different.
It's a different pay study, yes, so.
You either are, or you're not.
Yeah, so your, your point is that the graph we had showed that 77% of employees, oh, well, this, this graph. So this goes back to that comment that Kim made. We tend to think of people who are paid within plus or minus 15% of market as paid close enough to market, that you could generally think the risk of them leaving for compensation reasons alone is probably minimized, right? People don't tend to leave their company to get a little bit more money unless other things aren't working.
Well, maybe I just didn't, maybe I just don't understand the whole scope. But we just did this, I'm not, I'm not knocking it, we need this.
Yes.
And I'm all for doing what we need to do.
Yes.
But I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around this. We did this a couple of years ago, and said, well, okay, we're gonna catch ourselves up at three years. I believe this has been the third year, so we should be somewhere better than what we are.
Yeah. Well, the market, the external market continues to move, and this particular study also encompassed employers that may not have been in the last study. I'd leave it to Deborah.
I know, I don't, I don't mean to be argumentative, but how can you be okay today?
Deborah, wasn't that, that was not the enterprise funds, was it? Wasn't that?
Well, then, we're talking about the whole scope also, we're not talking about just enterprise.
But I think the study that we did was based upon the general, not the enterprise funds.
I know that. Well, let me make sure I understand, I don't mean to be argumentative, but we did a study. We said in three years, we're gonna catch up. We put money in the budget to do that.
Right.
This is our third year. Now we've done another one, and we got 77% of our employees behind.
But this is enterprise funds that I don't think, did you do the enterprise funds, it was not, was it, Deborah?
No. It was Springstead.
No.
That's, that's part of the explanation I have for you.
And when we're making sure that we're keeping up too, ma'am.
Well, I understand. Tell me what, tell me why I'm missing this thing.
Okay.
Did we, and I, please, I'm not being argumentative.
No, 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 no.
I'm trying to understand.
I understand, I can.
We did a study.
Right. Springstead.
Citywide.
Springstead.
Citywide.
Mm-hmm.
And we said, whatever the figures were, we need to do this, and in three years, we're gonna do it. One, two, three. This is our third year.
Right.
We're gonna have everybody pay scale where it should be according to our survey. And now we did a survey, said we're 77% behind.
Okay, hold your hope right there.
All right, got it.
One of the questions that Councilman McGee asked was, how are we compared to other municipalities?
Yes.
Under the Springstead study, that's all you look at is municipalities or some larger counties.
Yes. Okay, I understand.
No, they don't look at any of the large industries.
Right.
So it's a whole separate study, a whole separate philosophy. We had the concerns with the enterprise funds, where people were leaving and the energy services.
I'm all up on that.
100%. Okay.
I've got every bit of that.
So this study, this, this, the study for, and the study for the enterprise system was done totally separate.
Yes.
Then it was approval to get the MPD, which is the, the market differential. So this is just actually a pay plan, where you're charting the positions in it. It doesn't, it doesn't, it tells you that our people on Springstead, when they were, when they were on Springstead, they were below that particular market. 77% of those were below that market, because it is a much bigger market.
In reality, we just did a different study.
We did a different study, and.
And why you change your topic?
And we'll have different pay tables, which means that the only thing that's changing is those tables are higher than the rest of our employees will be, because we're on the total municipality. And when they compare those, X number of employees fell below the minimum for that bigger, for that study. So they're separate. But you, but you were right on that phase. We just finished phase three.
Right.
So, so we clear?
So we went out and did a different study now? Okay.
Well, 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 that study was also done, but this is just about the pay tables and, and the study that incorporates, so it is separate. So we have one and two. Springstead, WTW. That's the one we're talking about today.
And WTW includes private.
We changed your topic.
Other broader, right. Gotcha.
It's a broader market.
Right.
Right.
Right. Because you have people that's.
So, so, so we do have people that are satisfied and above the minimum, because really, in actuality, you cannot implement a pay plan with people working below the minimum. They have to legally be where you're paying.
Right.
Okay. So.
I got you.
Okay. So, that's clear, good deal. Okay, so what had, oh, let me get some water. The council had asked last year that the HR department work with WTW to help look at this whole process. Our pay guidelines are very important, and the city makes everyday compensation decisions, determine rewards, strategies to remain competitive. The philosophy in terms of, once the pay pans are implemented, the philosophy still stays the same, which means that you are below, you are moved up from below minimum. You get your increases based on your merits and your reputation and the other process. So there are no dollars that are being given because of the new pay plan, other than moving those from the minimum. There are some adjustments that will happen on an ongoing basis, based on whether departments have been put in the right categories, whether or not something was missing, and that's what we had been trying to work with all along. So one of the things that we found, based on when that particular study was done, there were a lower number, like 15 employees below the minimum. But in really looking at it in detail, there were 26 below the minimum, because we found that in our, in our energy, in our engineering group, they had 12 street positions that did the exact same thing as the stormwater, which is on the enterprise. So we will put those 12 positions in the enterprise pay plan, but they will remain in the general services in terms of how they're being paid. But the pay plan is just a guideline for us to maneuver and be able to reward without people reaching the maximum of the position quicker. So with those 26 employees, we had two from the airport, three from natural gas, four from stormwater, five from resource, water resources, and 12 from streets. And as I mentioned, it's ongoing, because we're even still working with water resources to make sure that we've placed different positions in the right grades. We'll be working with each department on an individual basis, but right now, this is sort of the estimate of the employees that fall below the minimum. And that dollar figure ended up being 140,0610. With water and sewer, it was 26,723, stormwater, 24,901, street, 68,348, natural gas, 19,840, and then the airport was $738. What we found also, when we took the 12 position for streets, that ended up being about 68,345. That would be to the general fund. We also found that there were some positions that were on the enterprise that would be at a disadvantage, and that was eight administrative support and three solid waste positions, which we will leave on the Springstead, but they're paid out of the enterprise. So it was just a matter of having a way to operate business with the pay plans. And so we also had the market differential, which did what it was supposed to do. People who left Energy Services, they came back, and we were also able to pick up a lot of experienced employees by making that change.
I think we should pay the right compensation. I'm all for that, because we've got good people. We want to continue to have good people.
Right.
Be able to hire good people. But we've gotta be competitive. I'm, I'm all for that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not looking for a, whatever, but I, we gotta be competitive.
Right.
And I'm all for that.
Okay.
So I appreciate what y'all do. I don't mean to be argumentative, I'm just trying to understand.
No, it was a good question. No, it was a good question. I can see how that could get.
It takes a lot of me to understand anything. I can only. I can't hardly get by.
No, 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 no. It was a perfect, it was a perfect question. And so we did get people to come back and with the market pay differential, that'll go away, but what has happened in the pay plan, that differential is already implemented into the pay structure. So instead of us tacking on a differential, those employees will already be paid those dollar figures within that structure. And so staff is really asking that council adopt the enterprise pay fund that has been proposed by Willis Towers and Watts. And we recommend adopting the budget amendment, BA two oh one eight sixteen, to appropriate the funds provided to move those twenty-six employees that fall below the minimum of the plan. And that's really the cost to, to implement a new plan.
Okay, careful, heavy questions. Anybody, pretty ladies?
Deborah, question. We'll pick out one, energy services. What are we, explain to me exactly which one of these plans you're saying that we need, we're going to be moving into? You got mid, medium, minimum, mid, maximum?
Okay. So the dollar figure that the employees are, are in now, like say for example, energy, energy services was the one that was having the hardest time and so they had already implemented the market pay differential. So those employees get their salary plus eight dollars and thirty-one cents. So that, that would be the salary that they get when they go on the plan. Other employees will just transfer over to whatever their dollar figure is at this point, but they have room to grow. Whereas our, our minimum and max are a lot smaller on the Springstead plan. So it's not about, the only, the only cost in this is moving those people who fell out of their plan up.
All right, let me ask you this. Okay, energy services is probably the most important, all of it's important, but.
Yes.
I mean, they're big time important because they're, really, Teladega uses more power than Canis, Linkton and which of, Hunsford put together, is that right? So you're looking a big boy, now airport, which I chair that commission, we still losing money there, we're growing. And that's going, five years from now, that, that would be a major player. But right now, I, I don't know that, that I would think they need to jump like some of the others because we're already subsidized in that airport.
But keep in mind that they're only moving to a plan that has been identified for them. So it's, it's four different plans, pay structures in here. So the airport has been identified based on what their dollar figure should be, water resources, engineering, energy services, each plan is separate. So therefore, as you, as Mary mentioned, if for some reason the energy services group competition becomes even higher, you have them capsized in their own plan.
I can answer my question. And that's, I just want to make sure we're apples to apples.
Okay.
I'm going to move that we approved enterprise button pay plan and the pay schedule and that we also have the budget amendment to appropriate funds to bring the twenty-six up that are below midpoint.
I'll say that. I have a motion, it's not going to be a discussion. You're not all in favor? Any opposed? You're not out of pack?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, we're just going to continue this meeting until, till later time this afternoon and I'll journey and we'll come back in at six o'clock.
Just so everyone understands, we just have to recess it because of a, of a way finance has to deal with. Your meals, we, you technically will still be meeting, but will, once you have your food, the mayor will ask to adjourn.
That's right. We're just going to recess for whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Anything else, council? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.